Montgomery County Board of Education, regular board meeting Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, Central Office Auditorium, 307 South Decatur Street, 5:00 PM. It's now called to order. First item on the agenda here, we have a invocation by Dr. Wendy Coleman, pastor of the First Congregational Christian Church. And I guess, what you got?
It is a blessing and pleasure to be here once again to offer words of, to offer words of prayer and encouragement to this school board, to our parents, to all those who are here in attendance. We just want to encourage the school board and let you know that at least three times a week, there are people praying for you.
Thank you.
Every morning at 6:30, our church members come together on the phone line and we lift up this school system and our children and we pray for our leaders. And we want to encourage you and thank you for the tough decisions that you make because we believe that it is for the best and the blessing of our children. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you now for this day. Thank you that you have allowed us to come together in one accord, God, in this place. But we thank you that you have entrusted us, first of all, with children, Lord. You have entrusted us to be mothers and fathers and grandmothers and aunties and big mamas and uncles and brothers and cousins, God, of children who are in the Montgomery School System, Lord. So today, we thank you for the blessing of our children. We bless you now, God, that you have given leaders, you have set in seats of authority, God, thinkers and deliberators and prayers and warriors and those who believe in the wealth and, in the wealth and welfare of our children. God, we thank you that you have set in place leaders who do not do on their own will, but they seek righteous judgment and they seek wisdom and they seek your power. Now, God, empower them and enable them, encourage them and strengthen them to make good decisions for our children. God bless each parent, each grandparent, each loved one who has a child in this system, even those who do not, but who care about the future of our nation. But we understand that the generations are being educated right here in this school system. So we give you glory, we give you power, we give you authority to move by your spirit and bless, God. In the name of Jesus, those who have bad thoughts, God, those who have wrong intentions, God, we ask that you stop their mouths, Lord. We ask that you give voice, give power, give strength, God, to those who want the best for our children, that they may be blessed, that it not be about partisanship, that it not be about organizations, God, but it be about our children, for they are depending on us. If we mess up, they can't help us to mess up. So God, we bless you on this day, that you have given us leaders, that you have given us community members, that you've given us parents who love our children. And before anything that we would desire, any political agenda, we will put our children first. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you. At this time, we'll have the pleasure of ladies and gentlemen, led by Dr. Eckerson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum with six members in attendance. Who? We have a quorum established at this time. May I have approval of the agenda, please? Motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the agenda as printed.
A second.
Yes, we move in properly, second, that we adopt the agenda as printed. Any questions, any discussion? She can hear none. Those who are in favor of approving the agenda, let's see, by short hands, it is unanimous. The next item on the agenda would be recognitions by Mr. Tom Saunter.
Good afternoon, everyone. You know, we're not really even two weeks into the school year, we already have some celebration to do with some of our students. We have students who've gathered recognition, not only here in our state, but also beyond the state's borders. Kiana Hooks, we'll start by recognizing this young lady. Is she here, please? Ms. Hooks? There she is. Ms. Hooks is a senior at Carver High School and has attended each of the last three Family, Career and Community Leaders of America, otherwise known as FCC LA, Natural Leadership Conferences. During the 2015 conference in Washington, she won the silver medal in the career investigation event. At last year's conference in San Diego, she won the gold medal in the entrepreneurship event. And this year, at the conference in Nashville, she won yet again, this time taking the silver medal in the hospital tourism and recreation event. She was one of more than 4,000 hundred students who participated in that event. And to come out number two in that, that's it. Ms. Hooks is enrolled in Carver's Hospitality and Tourism Program. She also completed the FCC LA Leadership Academy during the conference. She and other participants had the opportunity to attend leadership training, hear national speakers, meet the National Executive Council, and explore colleges and careers. Please join the board in congratulating Ms. Hooks for those wonderful accomplishments. Thank you so much. Next, the board would like to recognize two band students who helped represent Alabama in a parade in Chicago this summer. Will Peyton Kerr and London Bryant please come forward? Peyton is a student at BTW and London is a student at Lee High School. They were sponsored by the Montgomery Lions Club as part of the Alabama Lions High School All-Star Band. What instruments do you guys play?
French horn.
Yeah. All right, French horn and saxophone. Those are the instruments that get the ladies, I just want you to know. Mr. Dirk Dean, our board member, Mr. Dean, is a member of the Lions Club. Would you like to say something about this?
Well, I just wanted to congratulate, I'm the chairman of the youth committee for the Montgomery Lions Club, and this year was a very special year for Lions because it was our 100th anniversary. And I wanted to say that Peyton and London represented us very well. We sponsored them to go to Chicago and participate in the largest parade Chicago has ever seen. There were over 30,000 Lions there from all over the world, and they represented BTW and Lee and the Montgomery School System very well. So we're very proud of them, and I wanted them to have recognition that they certainly deserve.
Absolutely. Let's give a big round of applause. Thank you, gentlemen, for representing us so very well. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda would be the scheduled public comments. Ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item is public comments. It is important that we follow the rules of order and protocol in making public comments. The rules and procedures are as follows. Requests must be made in advance in writing to the superintendent's office by 5:30 PM on the Tuesday preceding the meeting day. Requests must have specified the nature of the business to be taken up with the board and the name of the person who will address the board to be added to the agenda. Communications must be respectful. Discussing specific student or employee matters will not be allowed. Individuals who have concerns that are inappropriate to be solved in this venue are welcome to seek a problem-solving meeting with the superintendent. Immediate feedback by the board may not be provided. However, you may be contacted for a follow-up by the superintendent or designated. Public comments may not exceed five minutes. The board chair has full authority to terminate the remarks of any person whose comments contain personal attacks, exceed the time limit, or otherwise inappropriate. A speaker may be considered disruptive, who continues to speak when their allotted time has ended, when asked to stop speaking by the board chair, or is an otherwise inappropriate. If a person fails to comply when asked to terminate comments, he or she will be escorted to their seat, either auditorium or off MPS property, depending on the level of disruption. The first person that's on the agenda to speak public comments, Ms. Karen Jones on statues.
Good evening, everybody. Well, I don't know how many times I've been up here about statues, especially the Robert E. Lee statue, along with Sister Pharaohs and others from SOS and others. I'm simply here to demand, because we've asked y'all four times, and I know that you say that you follow up, the parent who was here, parents who have come here, didn't get a follow-up. Pharaohs didn't get a follow-up. So, you know, we're here to discuss statues. General Lee statue, and I was reading on the website, great information on Lee High School's webpage, about the statue that was unveiled on Madison Terrace and Winona Avenue intersection, and later moved to the end of Madison Avenue, near the Ann Street corner, then moved in front of the school. We're asking, well, demanding, that you move this traveling treason to the first White House of the Confederacy at 644 Washington Avenue, because that's where he belongs, with his fellow treasoners, white supremacists, white nationalists, and those who love them and who are loyal to those who want to continue to remind black people of how they enslaved us, lynched us, raped us. And when I say us, I'm talking about my ancestors. When we look, and if we truly look at the Alabama Monument Preservation Bill, because we went down there rallying several times, we see that the verbiage says architecturally significant. Well, they moved the traveling treasoners, General Lee, several times. So he must not be that significant if they kept moving him. Like, it's like every day, black people have to be reminded of how our ancestors were sold, kidnapped, raped, lynched, and we must be silent on that issue because these white loyalists want to remind us daily, especially at a school which is probably 99% black. They have to look at that treason, look at that one who enslaved, had his own slave owners and in the end, a coward committed treason. He actually didn't want the statue, and nor does his direct descendants. His nephew, Reverend Robert Rightly, the fourth says that he does think that the statue need to come down, and that we need to have a conversation about how to remember the past without commemorating the past. But his great, 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 great uncle, Robert E. Lee, said, "I think it wiser, moreover, not to keep open swords of war, but to follow the example of those nations who endeavor to obliterate the marks of civil strife and commit the oblivion, to oblivion the feelings it endangered." So as to those who voted 68 to 29 on the Alabama Monument Preservation Bill, those white nationalists who still believe in white supremacy law, which is on day two of the 1901 Alabama Constitution, our books still, they need to repeal this racist bill before an uprising begins in this birthplace of the Civil Rights Movement, create other Confederacy, that in and of itself is oxymoronic. We have to look at the statues, even at the state capitol. Marion Sims, the doctor, who performed surgeries on black female slaves without anesthesia. And they have them on the state capitol. They have General Lee in front of a school, they say facing north. If I were a Jewish woman here, I wouldn't have had to come up here asking you four or five times, "Don't put up a school with Hitler's name." You need to think about, we don't have a statue in this city of George Washington College, Booker T. Washington. Let's erect some of those, if you don't want to take down Robert E. Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Put up some black Union soldiers.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We have certainly, the board has heard and superintendent has heard, that we will certainly take what you say.
So what will I hear from him, Mr. Ford? You going to follow up?
The superintendent has heard, and as I read, he would either follow up himself or his designated.
4309059, that's fantastic.
Next individual for public comments is Mr. David Thomas, baseball and softball in middle schools.
Due to the physical strength, can I give y'all a copy of?
Yes.
No, I think you guys have two more things to be, just comments, you have lost, you said. You don't get it all, thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Thomas. I'm a physical education teacher and head baseball coach at Park Rock High School. My reason for being here today is to present a proposal for the implementation of a middle school baseball and softball program for seventh and eighth grade for the Montgomery Public Schools to begin this school term. The purpose for creating a middle school baseball, softball program in middle school is to prepare these student athletes to compete at a high level once they reach high school. And it also would present another extracurricular activity for our middle school students. Now, what we want to do is try to put it at all nine middle schools. Right now, Lloyd Magnet has a middle school baseball and softball program already going, and they're using it, they have it under a club sport, which is not under the MPS umbrella. But what we want to do is have this covered under MPS umbrella as all the other middle school sports, including basketball, baseball, football, wrestling, track and field, and all the other sports, in order for these students to have opportunity to be able to play and get trained at the level they need to. I feel like it's needed because there's a huge gap between elementary and then high school. So you got seven, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, they're not playing any kind of baseball or softball, other than playing maybe league ball or travel ball. And as all of us know, to have kids that play softball and baseball, all of our kids can afford travel ball. So that's a big hindrance on our kids playing our league ball, kind of, for lack of a better term, kind of washed up. They're not going to get the training that they need in order to be at the level that they need to when they get to the high school level. Because right now, that's the only sport, softball and baseball, the only two sports, I think, that they lack, maybe in middle school, which I think is a big issue. And right now, they haven't set where the seventh and eighth grade can play up to the high school level, but a lot of them just are simply not ready. And I think they need that middle school, they need to play with their own age. But I've had, I know my years of coaching at Lee and then now Park Rock, and we've had a couple of seventh and eighth graders that had the talent enough to play up, but a lot of them get discouraged that you end up having to cut a lot of them, or they're not, they're not able to make the teams, and they don't have opportunity to do it, and I think it discourages them. And the biggest thing that I know is that, just out of research, I've been online, I looked at state finals the last two or three years, and pretty much each team that's in state finals, each of them have middle school programs. And I just feel like if we're ever going to compete, like our football programs here in the city and our basketball program here in the city with the other state schools, that I feel like this is a huge need, and like I said, to give the kids another opportunity to stay out of the streets, stay out of trouble, provide discipline for them, and just be able to go out and, like I said, once they get to our level, they will compete at a high level than what they have in the past. And I guess what we're asking, and what I'm asking is, if we could be under the MPS umbrella and MPS could provide assistance with maybe the startup costs and also with providing the coaching supplement as they do for the high school level.
I've got a question. Do we have Dr. Eckerson, a committee that could work on something like that? Because I think it's a great idea. It really is. I mean, it serves as, it's an incentive for our kids, it's something for them to do, it's an incentive. I mean, we all have set up here that the middle school is where the breakdown is, in grades. And if they had an incentive to work, I just wonder if there's some kind of a committee that we already have, that one of these, I talked to Coach Thomas today about, that they can serve on that committee and let's try to move it.
I feel like a lot of our kids, they just lose interest once they get to middle school, you know, by the time they get there and they don't have a middle school program, by the time they get to the high school program, they kind of lose interest. We met on a lot of really good athletes, kids that grown up playing baseball and softball, and they just kind of lose interest in it. Like I said, it just serves as an opportunity, if nothing else, to give them something positive. And a lot of them, all they have is baseball. And once they get to a point, everybody can't play basketball, everybody can't play football, but if they got that extra sport that they've all grown up playing, because there's not many kids that don't at least attempt to play baseball and softball at some point in their lives. And I just feel like that's just something that, since I've been back in Montgomery County, and with just my sixth year, it's been something I've been thinking about that we actually need, because you just miss out on a lot of really good kids that can just give them something, you know, something to do.
Very good. Mr. President, I know we're not supposed to address
Right.
...issues of what happened, but as a former coach, we talk about our students and what they're doing in the community, but we took away the community centers and other things that we had in our children at this age. And as a former coach again, with junior high school and high school, I know how important this is, Lynn. And I personally, I personally, well, that was not on their time, that's.
We're playing the time.
But really, I just think that it's a necessity, really.
Absolutely. I think, you know, I just talked to all the guys too, I'm certainly in support of what they're attempting to do. As you've already mentioned, there is quite a severe need for, to have programs in that middle school area, for those children to have something to do, due to the fact we do understand that all of the community centers work alone, and children don't seem to have anything to do. You all would serve a great purpose in this district. And I'm sure if you would contact Dr. Eckerson and get with him with you guys and your program as to how you're lining up, I'm sure we can find something to work some things out. I've spoken briefly with Dr. Eckerson today, along those same lines that we have discussed as relates to this particular program coming to the district, and I'm certain something could work out. You know, just get with Doc, when you leave here, he'll give you some feedback, give me your information, I'm certain he'll get with you in terms of trying to do something in this district for those children.
And Mr. President, if I will, it will help with the behaviors in the school because that will, there will be some accountability on that. But I did want to go back one and talk about what Ms. Karen Jones brought up. I think a committee should be in place to address that. I think that we need to hear all sides and have people to sit down at the table to find out what's the best move. We're not talking about removing, covering up, we're just talking about relocation. So, Dr. Eckerson, if you could get with Ms. Jones and seriously consider a committee to address this, because I see this as a divide for our city, and I think that if we're serious about healing wounds, that we need to have all parties at the table to discuss this.
Thank you so much. Oh, he has that. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. That's been placed on to Dr. Eckerson. I'm certain he's going to welcome her.
Excuse us a little bit, we have to make a statement.
Oh, no, we got to move on.
We ain't doing nothing, Mr. Eckerson. The KIVs committee will start after September the first, to put in a waiver, if it wants to do anything, to relocate, the committee will come in. And we're not trying to incite anybody to do anything illegal. What we're proposing is for the school system to look at a waiver to ask to relocate the statue.
Okay, Ms., she will work with Dr. Eckerson, we'll get some strength.
Baseball is important.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. We will address that. I think Ms. Smith and Dr. Eckerson will get together. Thank you very much. Next person on the agenda, Ms. Anya?
Anya?
Anya? That was the part I was trying to get to. Good evening.
Dear Montgomery Public School Board, Montgomery Public School Board members, fellow parents, education is the only tool we can give to our children and prepare them for the future ahead. I want to personally thank Mayor Strange, the City and County Commission, the Montgomery Public School System, and all supporters of the Brain Forest program. Your support allowed my daughter and many other children in this community to attend Brain Forest Academy during the summer. Unfortunately, this program cannot continue next year unless there is a full financial investment from the school system. For the past five years, the staff at Brain Forest has been able to secure funding, perform research and development, and create a framework for a successful summer program. Research shows that students lose two to three months of academic skills during the summer months. Brain Forest combats this loss so that there is limited to no prep work during the school year. We have to catch the kids young. Is there anyone in your community, family, workplace, who cannot take care of their kids in the summertime? Some of the other summer programs offered are not affordable for parents, seeing that the Montgomery Public School System has 76% of children in low-income households. Children need to stay active and productive academically. They are the ones who will take the city of Montgomery to the next level. Providing these services at no cost is a great incentive to get parents to involve their children in something worthwhile. Please make sure this program not only continues, but expands to more children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next person on the agenda for public comments, Ms. Katie Brown, our children.
Thank you and good evening. I also want to thank you for thinking of the children when you come to us with the baseball and softball in the middle school, because it's certainly needed in order for us to proceed forward. And I don't think that Dr. Eckerson should be the only one that he meets with the committee to deal with this situation. I think somebody from MPS should be there also, you know? Put it on him to do. You put it on, you're supposed to collaborate. And that's what we are not getting, collaboration. Remember when I went home with that sign that said, "I voted, I voted for you too." And in voting for you, we hope that you represent us and speak out on things that we need in Montgomery County. Because we are saying, the people who are coming in, state people are coming in, they are not aware of the fact that we didn't just fall, we were on top, and we will be on top again. And remember I said, we got a two-school system. We got the Magnet School and we got the traditional school, and we need to bring the traditional school up to pop. Another thing- Another thing that I wanted to bring to you was the fact of this form that I took to a meeting and was trying to explain it. And they wanted, and they wanted to know why the word "public" or "citizens" is not placed on here. We are the ones that make you make the decisions that you make. So therefore, instead of starting with State Board of Education, we are over State Board of Education. And I resent the fact that you didn't think enough of us to put us on this form that you have so that when I went to the meetings and showed them this form past the mountain, they said, "Where is the public?" I said, "You are outside. You need to go down and let them, let you on the inside." And I also, they asked me the question, why some of our people that are now in the public school system weren't promoted to some of these positions that you have here, nine positions. All of these people are from out of town. They also want to know why it is that teachers, you don't read about them getting an increase in salary. We need to collaborate. Do you know what that word means? Do it.
Mr., no, 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 no. I, uh, Mr., Mr., uh, President, uh, I think the people that are sitting here need to know that we didn't design the chart. We are just like the rest of the citizens in the city. So when you come and bring that to us, our hands are tied. So where you need to take your own concern, where you need to take your concern, yeah. But what I'm saying, we did not do the chart.
I was talking to MPS. Stop separating yourself and get together.
We are not separating ourselves, the state department is separating us.
Same about you. Get together. You're not two separate entities. You are together now.
Uh, we, we, uh, uh, we, I don't worry then. When you add your moment, uh, we will, um, we will continue. We're back in order now.
You don't talk to the state, what you talking to me?
We're not going to entertain. Oh, yeah, we're not going to entertain. The next person on the agenda for public, uh, scheduled comments would be Mr. Darryl Andrew on transportation.
Good afternoon to the board and to all of you that are in this room. I'm back again. Same thing, I was here at a board meeting in April, last school term. Transportation for a child with a disability. And, uh, what has been done is they put him in a school that presented a hardship for his mother. And he was in a school that was fine for his mother, but you say that you don't have transportation. I'm not understanding why you don't have transportation to that school, but you have transportation to another school, and the school is equipped for children with disabilities. What is, what happens is, and I was planning, I, I talked with Dr. Key, and, uh, uh, what has happened is, is that the child, if he gets sick, and he, she has to go pick him up, she has to go from Ann Street all the way out to Troy Highway, uh, Bell Road. And if he were, and the other kids, she has two at Lee, she has one at, uh, Howland Garden, Howland Avenue, I'm sorry. So it, it presents a hardship for her trying to get back across to pick her kids up at a time. Well, at Bellengrave, Bellengrave is equipped for children with disabilities. He's in that school now. She's been struggling and we've been struggling trying to take him back and forth. And even at that, if she does that, sometimes she has to take one out of school early in order to get back and get the others. So that presents a hardship for her. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm back again asking, uh, we, we filed agreements, there's nothing, we've heard nothing from that. Uh, so I'm, I'm just here just to let you know that something needs to be done, and it needs to be done with. I, I, it's a, it's a carryover from last year. And the chap, it's affecting the chap, my grandson, it's affecting him, because he feels like he's not wanted right here. And, and you keep moving back and forth. So I, this is what I want the board to consider. And, and I'm not understanding that if there's some reason that you can't. All, all you got to do is let me know, show it to me in writing where you can't do it, and I'll be satisfied with that. Yes, ma'am, Dr. Key.
My understanding was you have had what you wanted last year.
Can we wait till these people leave now so we can hear what you're saying, please?
Okay, didn't you, didn't you have this last year?
Well, they put him in the school, but they did not put the transportation to the school. The thing is, is the transportation. Right now, he's enrolled at Bellengrave. But she's having to carry him, I'm having to carry, you know, to school back and forth. And I don't, I'm not understanding why, if you're equipped for that, the school is equipped for, uh, disability, then why don't you have a bus? I've talked to several bus drivers, and they were willing to, if they had to, go out of their way to pick this child up, to get this child there. So that's what I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding.
I've sent in a letter, and Dr. Edgerson told me today when I spoke with you a moment ago, that Dr. Williamson is working on this. And I, and he said he was going to speak with you after the meeting today. From my understanding, I, I don't know the rules, but like I said, I, it has been sent, I, the last I've heard, they were working on this.
Okay, this is the thing too, and I asked for this last time. Show me something, is there a book with the rules that you have to go by? I think that every parent needs to know what you can and you can't do. Is there such thing?
Mr. President, if I can just comment quickly. I would think, and I'm trying to go back some years, um, that you, and, and don't quote me on this, it's not legal, I, I, like I said, this is from my memory. But I would think that you could be providing transportation for your child. And, uh, I'd like to get to talk with you to get the specifics, because I'm not, I'm like you, I'm not understanding why. At least there can't be like a, a, a somewhere close by where they can pick up your child where you can drop everybody off at any time. And there's a bus to take that child from that location out to that school. But I don't know the specifics. But I would think under, um, all of the special ed laws that there would be something to address that. But I would just like to talk to you about it, just to get some information.
Okay.
And they'll, they'll let you know the definite answer, but.
I, I, I'm a pastor and, uh, I've got to be at church, uh.
Anytime. Just look me up, my, my phone number is on this MPS website.
Okay.
Uh, you can say hello, you'll be here, I wish you'd give it to me.
And one other thing, if you would just leave your information for Dr. Edgerson, he's gonna get with you, and certainly we're hiring this out.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you for coming. And I do want to say one thing about the, the Brain Forest. I didn't say anything to you, but I'm all for it. I think what you're doing, I mean, what the statistics that you brought up about how many students we lose during the summer as far as, you know, achievement, um, I hope for you that the board here hears you out. And I thank you for coming.
And Ms. Katie Brown, we, just to go back to our kids, I'm gonna be like a minute. We are pursuing collaboration. We are, we were not, had no input over the hires. The person that did that, uh, uh, was above us. It was brought up at one of our state meetings about the hiring and looking within our district to find those quality people in our system that's familiar with it to help bridge that gap. But I don't think it was, um, communicated well, it was distorted to me, something else. When all I was wanting to just communicate was, we have quality people here.
Yes.
And they deserve an equal chance as well.
Yes.
Uh, but I won't go into the specifics, but I'll just say a standing ovation was gave for a purely poor answer.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda will be citizens' comments. And we do have a script for citizens' comments. Ladies and gentlemen, our next agenda item is citizen comments. It is important that we follow the rules and order of protocol in making public comments. The rules and procedures are as follows. Citizens may sign up for comments before a board meeting. Citizen comments must be on an agenda item. Forms for citizen comments will be available thirty minutes before regularly scheduled board meetings. Agenda topics to be addressed must be identified on the form in order to speak. Individual citizen comments may not exceed three minutes. A total of thirty minutes are allowed for all citizen comments. Communications must be respectful. Discussing specific student or employee matters will not be allowed. Individuals who have concerns that are inappropriate to be solved in this venue are welcome to seek a problem-solving meeting with the superintendent. Immediate feedback by the board may not be provided, however, you may be contacted for follow-up by the superintendent or designated. The board chair has full authority to terminate remarks of any person whose comments contain personal attacks, exceed the time limit, or, or otherwise inappropriate. A speaker may be considered disruptive who continues to speak when their allotted time has ended, when asked to stop speaking by the board chair, or is otherwise inappropriate. If a person fails to comply when asked to terminate comments, he or she will be escorted to their seats, out of the auditorium, and/or off MPS property, depending on the level of disruption. We have one that signed up for an agenda item, and that again would be the middle school athletics. Two, uh, may not exceed three minutes.
Good afternoon. Uh, I would just like to speak on behalf of Mr. Thomas' agenda. Is that, uh, I was a great athlete when I was in school. But I started when I was in kindergarten, you can say. What I would lack, playing football, baseball, basketball, whatever. But when you think about those things, and the only way I got through college was I had a, played sports. And I played baseball and I played football at Alabama State. And the thing is about it, a student have a greater chance if he starts in the first or second grade or wherever the sport he lacked and could continue on. When he stopped in that seventh and eighth grade, he falling behind. He have a less, a least opportunity to get a scholarship. Now, you got good scholarships in volleyball, you got good scholarships to go to college in baseball. Let's think about those students who lack those two sports. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yeah.
I'm Dan Lewis, who served forty years as a coach at Carver High School. And, uh, I've always thought about the idea, when you got young, big kids who start at a very early age, it helps the development as you get older. And, uh, I think it's a very good idea, which I support, that we do, uh, provide some type of softball for girls and also for, for, for boys, uh, baseball at junior high school level, because athletic is one way by which you learn the lesson of life. Lesson of discipline, lesson of being able to get along and work together. And, uh, I'm highly in favor of having those two sports at the middle school level. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Just as a footnote as the board has been said, I have done research all over the state of Alabama and Georgia. Montgomery County is one of the few counties that do not have baseball, softball in the middle school. So we, we, we thank you in your van, in advance for your consideration and support.
You're out of order then. You don't speak, these people have the floor, you're out of order. Please be quiet.
My name is Coach Rod White, I'm the head baseball coach at Carver High School. Just to reiterate what Coach Thomas and all these gentlemen said, I took over the program this past season, last year. We actually had an outstanding season turning around. However, the problem that I see as a head coach is again, basically what these gentlemen said, these young men are coming in, they're not prepared to play at the level. We made it to the playoffs, our guys, the first time seeing the playoffs is like.
Appreciate, again, appreciate you all. And your point has been well taken, guys, we've heard you. And I'm sure we're here to what the, your concerns are. Thank you all very much again. Uh-huh, and we'll be talking. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the State Department Updates and Information for Discussion, A Strategic Plan 2017.
Well, good evening, everyone. We're gonna first have an update with strategic, strategic plan. I'm gonna ask Dr. Wright from the Office of School Improvement as well as he serves as our designated meeting chief, director of office for the State Department. So he is gonna walk us through the MPS Plan, Strategic Plan 2017 at this time. Dr. Wright?
Good evening, everyone. Um, so we're not gonna walk through the whole entire plan. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Um, I believe the board members received, uh, the strategic plan last month. We were supposed to discuss it in our collaborative meeting, but we ran out of time. So what I wanted to do tonight, um, a couple of things. This is really not a fully developed strategic plan. Um, what you have in front of you is our goals and our outcomes and our strategies for what we want to accomplish this school year. And we will begin engaging the public and our internal and external stakeholders um, to build the remaining parts of the plan for years two, three, four, and five of the intervention. Um, so I wanted to give you an opportunity, if you had questions, concerns, or feedback about any of the things that you see um, in the plan for this particular school year. What I wanted to, to really spend time on is the five goals. Um, we realize that you can't have a strategic plan without having, um, input from as many stakeholders as possible. And so what we want to do before we began, um, before we even began the process for getting feedback on and building the rest of the entire plan is to make sure that the five goals that we're focused, focusing on completing by the end of the intervention are the right goals and that we have an opportunity to get your input and feedback on the five goals that we're looking to accomplish at the end of the intervention. So if you look on, um, and it's displayed here on the screen, but if you look on page two of the document that you have, you see the five goals, um, that we are working very hard to accomplish at the end of five years. And I wanted, um, to take an opportunity to receive your feedback and input as to what do you think about those five goals. And we're gonna do the same thing for, uh, we're gonna take the whole entire month of September uh, to get feedback from our teachers, our principals, and folks in the community, uh, with regard to these five goals and fine tune them and go forward with the rest of the process to build the remaining parts of the plan. So this is the opportunity that you have to give us any feedback that you have about the goals and any questions that you have about, um, the specific goals, strategies, and outcomes that you see in the developing plan for year one of the intervention.
I, I, I go first. Right now, currently, we don't have a reading program. And I know, I was looking here where it says support of the whole child, college and career ready, foundation for success. I know teachers are working on something, so I'm not, I'm not putting it out there like they're not doing anything. But, um, is it fair to ask them to do triple duty? In my opinion, to find the right resources, making sure that there, uh, I know that, and that those who are skilled are going to have an idea on how to find research-based material. But it's a lot of time. And even if you pick that particular But it's a lot of time, and even if you pick that particular, um, you use a particular standard, will it be effective for your classroom? So, that's why I'm asking about a program, something that has reliability, validity, that the children, the stu, the teachers can use. And I think about new teachers who are not familiar with that. I know they can partner with someone on grade level and what have you, but I think it's just, when I think about the major schools, they have something. And then I think about everybody else, they're trying to put something together. So, what's gonna, what will be put in place to address that this year? Because next year, my, my, actually, August the tenth was too late.
So, if you look, um, under goal three, and you will see there are some strategies, um, for year one. And one of those strategies includes a curriculum, um, review. Um, our curriculum department has already worked on including the curriculum frameworks that teachers are, are using this year, but as you have already pointed out, we know that we have lots of gaps in terms of resources that we know that we need to fill. Um, I believe, uh, the reading program is, I believe, Dr. Bornet, the reading program is, uh, we're looking, uh, beginning that process of looking at purchasing a reading program to implement for next year. Um, we have already purchased math programs for high schools to implement this year.
So, let me just, I'm, I must just halt right here. For the kindergarten that's waiting for next year, the first grader, the second grader. I mean, next year is just so late. Our kids need it this year.
We, we understand.
And I, and I know it's not, you know, it's hours over YouTube, and you can only do so much as well, but I would've thought coming in that that would've been, that one of the main things, you know, that would've, that would've been addressed. That's just me?
You're absolutely right. It's just, uh, you know, there's a lot of needs within the district, and so...
Yeah, well, we know. Listen, if anybody knows, we know.
I'm sure you're aware, and so, we're, we're, we're trying to prioritize all the needs as best we can to, to address, um, all the critical areas that need to be addressed. But we're, we're, um, made a lot of improvements with the frameworks that teachers are using this year. And we know that we need to purchase materials and work in as fast as possible to, to, to get it done. Yes, ma'am.
And I wanna, I just wanna say this to the public that are here, especially Ms. Brown. You came in here, and this is nothing against you, okay? And you, would we, we have got to start working together, and I know you brought that up. And what Ms. Briers was trying to do was, 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 was explain. And I'm not taking that from Ms. Briers, because, because we can go toe-to-toe. But what's going on here, that's why I gave you this. I didn't give you, and I'm, it's, I just had one to give, or I would've given it to every one of you. This needs to be out to the public, because what this is, and that's why I gave it to you, it's a phase one, phase two, phase three. And what's happening is everybody, Rome wasn't built in a day, okay? And you can't come in and fix a system in one year. What they've had to do is come in and they've done, I'm not trying to, I mean, this is serious. They have come in here and they have done a phenomenal job, and we're attacking them. The scary part is tomorrow, and we're having a state board meeting to get rid of somebody that is, you know, they're going, they will hire, but they've gotta, they've gotta put the data out. They've gotta find it out, and it, it takes time.
The data is out.
And we haven't given, that's what this is.
Okay.
That's why I gave you this. Read through it. I have read through it three times. It really covers it as it's gonna happen. And, and it's impressive if you look at it.
And the only reason why we haven't made this document public yet is because we wanted to go through the process, um, with the board and some of our external and other internal stakeholders to make sure that the goals are the goals that we have settled on as a community and as a, and as a district before we publicly, um, make the document.
And I wasn't trying to undermine you. I just want them to see that there is this plan, and we are in the phase one part of it now. That, that's all. So, it wasn't undermining, the, the public is...
Yes, ma'am.
And she asked why the public wasn't on there? And I'm, I'm not, nothing against that, but McDonald's, when they did their president, their co-chairman do it, they don't put the public on there. It's not on there. This was an organizational charge.
Because they don't care. I care about our children. And the people I talk to in the community, I wanna give them the facts.
I don't know, boy, we can split hairs, but what I'm saying is...
No, no, split hairs, just what you get.
We're not robots, and they're not robots either. You don't press a button and get what you want.
Thank you, thank you all very much. Let's let Doctor continue giving his report, please, if you would. Continue.
I'm, I'm interested in any questions you have about the plan and specifically about the goals. Is there anything about, um, the goals that we need to change, reconsider, add in, something that we didn't include?
Well, you know, if they do, we'll look over this and maybe get back with you. If something arises that we did not address today in this venue, then maybe we can, you know, give you a call. If we identify there, there are some things or issues and concerns that we need to address, then we'll give you a call later. Um, one thing I did want to bring to the attention, I, I read and heard that we had twenty-five, uh, uh, need twenty-five bus drivers. I want you guys to start taking in consideration what we used to do years ago. It saves the district money as well as helps with discipline and being on time. And that is, let's go back and reconsider allowing teachers to also drive school buses. And that would leave a lot of this in terms of the lack of having bus drivers in place, if you want to consider.
Uh, point information, Mr. President, real quick before...
Point of information, yes.
Point of information.
Uh, and this may not be related to you, so you, you might be saying textbooks. I did not wanna forget, I did have a call. Um, I know we ordered math books, but I'm still getting calls about, um, students not being able to bring textbooks home. And I always use my son in this example. He has two textbooks of, for each class, one for school and one to take home. And I feel like if his school can do it, then every other school can do it.
Yes.
So, I wanna know, what are we, how are we going to address that? I know we have traditional parents that rely on those good old-fashioned textbooks because everybody doesn't have computers or internet access. So, Mr. Edison, if you can, um, provide the public with an answer.
Well, I think you and I had this conversation a couple of weeks ago, and we basically said that a parent can check out a book at a school. We do not have enough books for students to take them home. Uh, that has been a challenge for the district for quite some time, when I've spoken to individuals about that. And so, we will allow parents to check books out as needed. If they want to assist their son or daughter with their homework or to, uh, utilize that textbook with someone who's providing tutoring, that would be fine. Uh, but that's the process that we're using at this time.
One more point of information, Mr. President.
Before you leave, before you leave textbooks.
Okay, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Um, out of the eleven schools, I personally talked to all of my principals. There was one school that did not have textbooks, and that was, uh, South, all of their textbooks, and that was South Lawn Mill, because it was said, stated on one of the radio talk shows that students, all, none of the students had books, which we knew that was not true. But I personally talked to the principals, and they, one concern was, um, at Lenea, they had more students to come in than they ended the year with, and so, they needed some more books. They had been on order and stuff like that. So, all of what you hear on radio and hear on TV is not true. But I would like to challenge, uh, each one of the board members to just personally call your principals and see if they have textbooks, because they know better than anybody else whether they have textbooks or not. And we can cut down on some of the rhetoric that we're hearing, that there are people without textbooks. Make no, I make no bones about that. At Cotoma, they said, they were just waiting on the large print books for those who were on the five oh four program. So, if we make, I know the state has taken over. That's, that's not an issue with me. It's here to stay until wh- whenever. But we still don't fail to do our job because we are elected officials, and we do talk to the people, and we do know what's going on in our schools, Mr. President. So, I challenge each board member to check with their principals. And if they don't turn the report in to Dr. Boswell, he, he can't, he's not clairvoyant. He doesn't know, and they can't estimate.
Right, and, and Mary, I, um, had spoken to Mr. Dawson along those same lines, and it's my understanding that, uh, some of the texts were late in terms of which choice they had made. And those books have been ordered, but they are late arriving, I would think. But then these, uh, plans have been in place to make sure that every child is with a textbook.
All right, point, point of information, Mr. President. Um, I do have a question about how many subs do we have currently in classrooms in all of our schools? I know that's a human resource question.
I will say that number constantly changes. We got more reservations today, but I will say about thirty in one feeder pattern and about twenty-seven in the other.
So, fifty-seven subs?
Yeah, fifty-seven.
And some of those are pending certification issues. Um, for example, if we're waiting to get the testing information back, we hired as long-term subs first to make sure that they're gonna get a professional certificate. So, many of those are for that reason. Every Monday, I send that information in, um, to Dr. Cooper. We started last week, and she received an update today, so if you'd like that information, I'm gonna call back.
How, how soon will we put somebody other than a sub in there?
As soon as the people are available. We're, we're still interviewing every day. Some of those areas are very hard to fill, like math and math, they're just not out there. But what we're doing is we've reached out to the colleges and the universities to try and get their input into your assignment.
Well, my reason for asking is because my daughter does sit in a class with a substitute teacher, and having a sub puts children behind the eight ball. And the reason I say that, if they're long-term subs, nobody's doing an evaluation on this teacher. They don't get the evaluation that regular teachers get. So, they could be doing something right, wrong, or indifferent, and there is nobody to hold them accountable.
Well, actually, if, if... If I can make a comment about that, um, I, I think we have to put some facts out there first. We can only hire people if they are available. And at this present moment, we do not have a pool of teachers that are available for us to place in our schools. Second point is, we have worked and we will continue to work with our principals to use creative measures in order to make sure that we can get a teacher at some point in time in front of those students. Those are the two realities that we have at this present moment. HR will continue to see if we can place individuals in those schools. Um, even with the conversation that individuals are having with placing class size reduction units or putting more, more, uh, teachers out there, part of my concern is not just creating classes and only putting a sub there. If we're gonna put a teacher there, then that's the direction we wanna move in. So, we will continue to work diligently in order to place qualified teachers in front of our students.
And, and that was my reason of bringing it up, because when you mentioned, um, quality, you know, are they getting what they need? Is that quality for them to have a sub? You know, so, but I just wanted that to, just wanted to hear the answer out loud, I suppose.
Thank you, Ms. White. At this time, we'll have, uh, grading promotion or retention updates by Ms. Jacqueline Campbell.
Good evening. Um, each of you should have a copy of the GPR or excerpt from the GPR that addresses the changes. Tom, if you will pull the screen up, they're going to be addressing number three, so the audience can see. Um, Kristy Hatch presented to you all during the summer the updated changes for the 2017-18 school year. We are constantly reviewing and making, uh, changes that's going to benefit our students. One thing, through the collaboration with the Office of Assessment and Accountability, some of these changes were presented to our department, Curriculum and Instruction, to address. The first thing I would like to talk about is what's occurring in middle schools, grade seven and eight. Students are able to earn a Carnegie unit for Algebra I. However, students who are in high schools, and they are earning that Carnegie union, unit at the high school level, there is an exam at the high school. So, what this change is, is to ensure, number one, at the middle school, the quality of instruction that students are receiving in the Algebra I class is equal to what's occurring in Algebra I in high school. So, with that, an exam will become a part of the grading system in middle school for Algebra I. That would be an exam semester one and semester two, which is the same process that occurs in secondary for students who are taking Algebra I.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. That was a concern I brought up today by having Algebra I in the seventh grade. Glad to see you have that on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
The next, um, item for discussion would be page thirty.
Page what?
Page thirty, Tom, for the audience. And for you all, it deals with the grading and promotion. Uh, you should have high school GPR-specific information, number one, and we're going to look at C and D. Previously in our district, a student was required to pass all core subjects. So, if that child failed one, he or she was retained for the year. That means that that child is one grade level behind.
Right.
However, if the student enrolled in some type of grade recovery, that would include evening classes, then when that child earns that, uh, grade for promotion, it appears as if that child is, has skipped two grades, and there's no records in terms of student performance because of the way our present policy or our procedure exists. So, what, uh, we have done, and this is one of the things that our assessment office brought to our attention, and that is, we wanna ensure that our students are in the correct cohort. So, if they were one year behind as an eighth grader, and they took, enrolled in evening academy, and they would have had a double promotion, they would've skipped ninth grade, and now they're in tenth grade. So, now we have a cohort issue. So, what is being proposed to change is that placement of students in grade nine through twelve is determined by the number of credits earned by the beginning of the school year. Students must earn the minimum number of Carnegie units necessary for grade placement above grade nine as indicated here. And you can see for tenth grade, um, it's five. Eleventh grade, eleven. Twelfth grade is seventeen. Plus, they must be able to complete all graduation requirements within that year to be classified as a twelfth grade.
I, I think that's a good idea. That's a good, excellent idea. We needed that.
And the final thing that I would like to bring to your attention would be page thirty-four for the audience. What you see here is, um, a corrected graduation information. Uh, you all may have in your packet two documents. One is going to reflect the old, and you should have one that reflects the new, which is on the screen.
Is the old page thirty-four?
It's gonna say thirty-five.
Can't be thirty-four.
But the corrected one is at thirty-four.
Now, thirty-four is the, the one that we have just...
You all, you all have that in your packet.
That's the one that just done, thirty-four.
Okay, well, just for informational purposes, what we did, um, and again, this was brought to our attention by the Office of Assessment and Accountability. There was a item that was addressing the old graduation requirement. So, all we did was deleted the high school graduation exam section because it was no longer applicable. So, what you see on here is just the, uh, diplomas that are awarded in Montgomery Public Schools. So, it's an LEA decision. At the bottom of the chart, if you could scroll up, um, Tom, it reflects the changes in relationship to our special students with an exceptionality. So, that's, these are the changes that we have made. And I will say again that we are constantly reviewing and assessing where we are to make sure that we remove all barriers to student success in Montgomery Public Schools. Are there any specific questions to what I've just shared?
I do have one. The Essentials Path, Pathway, is that going to count towards the, um, the graduation rate, that, that, you know, how they do the percentages that you know of? I'm just asking.
I, I'm sorry. I don't have the accurate information. I don't wanna mislead you, so...
Thank you very much, Ms. Campbell. Uh, at this time, um, considered for approval, need a motion for the approval of the board minutes July eighteenth and twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen.
Mr. President, I move that we, uh, approve the minutes of, of July... Mr. President, I move that we, uh, approve the minutes of, of July eighteenth and twenty-fifth, May.
On second.
Yes, we move the properly second, that we approve the board minutes from July eighteenth and twenty-five, twenty-seventeen. There is a discussion. Seeing here none, those who are in favor, let's see if I show a hands. It's, oh, you're out. Okay, there's five members and one's absentee. Yep. She's still on. Are you still on over there?
I'm still here. If I can touch on those two.
We can't see you, no, uh, unless, that's okay, we, we, it's, it's passed. Thank you very much. Now, we, you work hard. Uh, now, we are, uh, the, the, uh, that has been, you know, passed, motion passed.
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Okay, the next item is, um, Alabama Association of School Board District Four Director nomination. Do we have a nomination out there?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Melissa Snowden for District Four Director, and I have a second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second, that we, uh, is that, are there any other nominations, first of all? Need to do that in the last. But since we do have, Melissa's been moved to second, that we are not denomina-, uh, oh, denominate.
Spin a.
Nominate, denominator? I don't know. Denominate her for the, uh, uh, District Four Director. Those who are in favor, let's see if I show a hands. It is unanimous, yet, uh, Melissa, did you hear that?
I did, and I just wanna thank everybody for their support and their confidence in me, and hopefully, we will have the District Four representation in Montgomery County, so thank you so much.
Thank you, I didn't see your hand go up, Melissa.
Okay.
Okay, girl, have a go. Okay. Now, that brings us to a conclusion, as joined at this time, the next meeting date will be September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen at five P.M., regular board meeting, central office.
One question, although, uh, Dr. Edison, we did, um, say that that meeting is still the twenty-eighth, we didn't change that meeting, we just added this one.
That's correct. That's not down here, though. We're talking about with.
Well, it could be.
Oh, it could be, yeah, well, we'll leave that, yeah, okay.
Uh-huh, September twen-, that's on a Monday, right?
Okay. Meeting's now joined.